I know we have a quorum, but I figured, why don't we let all the people who are in line get in before we start? Unless there's objection, seeing none. Wrong count, please. Excuse me, Melinda Adeb. Could I have the count? Eighty-eight. Okay, we have a quorum. So would all town meeting members be in front of the wooden wall back there? And anybody who is not a town meeting member should be on the other side of the wooden wall back there. Okay, so, uh, why don't we start with the pledge? By the way, I would ask that all cell phones or anything like cell phones be turned off so we not be disturbed during our deliberations. As is the practice at our annual town meeting, we will now have the reading of the names of those former town meeting members who passed on during the past year, and we will then have a moment of silence. Seymour Gallant, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. William E. Christensen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Francis Mahoney, M. Provost Jr., Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Leona M. Paulier, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Carl H. Johnson Jr., Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. Moses S. Marks, Sarkeesian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Preston J. Sturdivant Jr., Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Constance C. Broder, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. We now have a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, since we have some votes that require two-thirds, we have to have counters. Here, could I have Roger Bellumere and Jeff Mitchell, please, come forward to be sworn? And in the middle here, could I have Norm Bergeron and Paul Kosky come forward to be sworn? And on the left side, could I please have Reverend Knight and Beth Johnson come forward to be sworn? Thank you. Article one. To hear the reports of the Finance Committee, of the town offices and committees, and act on anything relative thereto, Mr. Hussey.
Can everyone hear me? Yes, no?
I don't think your mic is on, Kevin.
How about now?
Takes a second.
I'll try one more time. No? Yes, no? At the risk of being rude, I'll speak a little louder. It's the Finance Committee report to Annual Town Meeting, May 7, 2013. Good evening. Finance Committee has completed its review of the town's budgets and CIP for fiscal 2014, which you have before you now. I would like to acknowledge the hard work by our appointed committee, and I appreciate their commitment to adding value to the annual budget process. Everyone on our committee has taken a personal ownership interest in how we run our town. And although we didn't unanimously agree on all actions taken by town administration and the Board of Selectmen, we respect and appreciate their efforts in presenting to our committee a practical and forward-thinking budget. Fiscal 2014 finds our local, state, and national economy continuing to move timidly and unevenly forward from the Great Recession, as unemployment and tax revenue collections continue to slowly trend in a positive direction. Locally, the $54.3 million budget before you represents a 981,000 or 1.8% increase from last year. Approximately $640,000 or 70% of this increase is continued investment in the operating budgets of our school systems, that would be both the Auburn and Bay Path systems, and a $540,000 increase in debt. It should also be noted that there has been no commitment at this point to add to the stabilization account. To be clear, town administration has prudently planned for our 2014 budget that state revenues will be increasing by a conservative 1.4% or $137,000, which is really 18% of our total revenues raised in this budget. Our expectation, however, is that when we reconvene for the Fall Town Meeting, that we will once again be deciding on appropriating additional state funds and not negotiating what budgets to cut due to a shortfall. That's a good thing. Fiscal 2014 also represents the second full year of a detailed budget implementation of the town reorganization by department, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize once again the hard work by our town manager, the CFO, and their staff in making this bookkeeping nightmare very logical for the Finance Committee to analyze and interpret. I would also like to caution you that certain budgets, in particular police and fire, are adjusted to account for a new DPW division called Fleet Maintenance, as we are moving certain maintenance and repair expenses in-house. Therefore, the percent change in those public safety budgets actually understates the true increase in those budgets and actually overstates the percentage increase in the DPW budget. Those percentages can be found on Page 6. The fiscal 2014 budget of $54.3 million before you was built assuming a 1.5% increase in tax levy. Additional assumptions include a conservative $400,000 in projected new growth. This is despite a three-year average growth that's just in excess of $600,000. Local receipts also are planned to grow by $400,000, reflecting increased motor vehicle excise taxes and sewer and trash fees. Due to the preliminary revenue assumptions from the state, no provision at this time has been made to add to our stabilization fund. This also will be revisited at the Fall Town Meeting. Warrant articles include annual fiscal housekeeping, approval of articles relating to the Auburn Middle School project, which are all contingent, I might add, on favorable, excuse me, favorable votes from the Annual Town Vote next week. Recurring articles relating to Medicaid receipts of $112,000, OPEB funding, $500,000, lighting timer repairs for Lemansky Park from funds already appropriated and passed CIP approvals, new medical hazardous waste revolving accounts, roadway acceptances, and a shift in use of $250,000 in CIP funds for the library that were actually approved last year. Regarding the warrant articles, the Finance Committee takes the following positions. Articles that I do not mention means that from my direction from town administration, they've been withdrawn. So Articles 2 through 12, Finance Committee recommends. Article 13, I believe, will be passed by. Article 14 and 15, we recommend. Article 17 through 19, we recommend. Article 23, we recommend. Article 24, we defer. Articles 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29, we all recommend. Articles 30 through 33, we recommend. Articles 34 and 35, we defer. And Article 36, we recommend. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Hussey, Chairman, and Kavanaugh Vice Chair, James Bonifilio, Edward Coleman, Christopher Ryan, Michael Coroda, and Kimberly Holstrom. Thank you.
Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm pleased to report a report for the Board of Selectmen. With me tonight are Vice Chairman Bob Grossman, Steve Simonian, Denise Brotherton, and Ken Holstrom. Under the leadership of our town manager Julie Jacobson and CFO Ed Kastenovich, we are confident not just in the budget presented tonight, but the overall financial position of the town. The town manager and CFO have worked to develop financial policies and strategies. Town administration has taken a conservative approach while still meeting the needs of the residents. I also would add, over the last year, it's been a pleasure working with the Finance Committee under the leadership of Chairman Hussey and the School Committee under the leadership of Chairman Laurie. It's, we thank you for your hard work tonight, and we will, I would like to give you the Board's positions. Article 2 through 10, the Board of Selectmen voted approval. Articles 11 and 12, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Article 13, the Board of Selectmen voted to defer to the petitioner. Articles 14 and 15, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Articles 16, defer to the petitioner. 17 and 18, vote to recommend approval. Articles 19 through 22, defer to the petitioner. Articles 23 through 28, recommend approval. Article 29, we recommend approval. Articles 30 through 33, recommend approvals. Article 34 and 35, defer to the petitioner. And Article 36, we recommend approval. Thank you, and have a good town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich. Are there any other committees which wish to be heard now? I know some may be deferring until their article comes up. Seeing none, let us now go on to Article 3. Two, I mean. Why don't we do two? Okay. "To determine what sums of money the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for and appropriate to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, or act on anything relative thereto." Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Moderator, Dan Carpenter, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting raise appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide for and appropriate to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing year. The several sums of money in the proposed budget as stated in the recommendation of finance columns on Page 23 through 65, inclusive of the town of Auburn FY 2014 budget and annual town meeting warrant totaling $51,601,21, and to raise said sum by transferring from available funds, $130,000 from free cash, $30,000 from cemetery lots and graves, $130,000 from Overley surplus, $30,000 from pension reserves, $3,000 from wetlands fund, $20,000 reserved for appropriation dog licenses, $50,000 reserved for appropriation Casella host agreement, $715,044 from reserve for appropriation ambulance, $20,000 from overflow trash bags, $25,000 from police towing, $9,334.77 from premiums on bonds/bands as an offset to high school debt exclusion, $36,000 from Packerchog lease proceeds, $437,789.96 from Packerchog Meadows Pappus, $126,721.90 from high school debt reserve, $7,500 from perpetual care, and by raising and appropriating or otherwise providing for the balance of said funds, each total amount as printed in the recommendation finance committee column of the 2013-2014 budget, to be considered a specified departmental appropriation and further that the Finance Committee is authorized to transfer between the individual accounts, which total any specific appropriation when requested by a department and the committee feels such transfer is in the best interest of the town.
Do I have a second? I have a second, thank you. And now, Ms. Jacobson, our town manager, has a report to make.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to take a few minutes to go over some of the exciting initiatives and projects that have happened in the last fiscal year since we were here in May. I know we gave a brief update at the Fall Town Meeting as well, but I think it's important to take the opportunity to highlight a few of those projects that have taken place, excuse me, which have been guided, you know, first of all, by the town administration. I want to thank all of the employees for all their hard work in all the departments, but also for the guidance of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee throughout the year and every day. Just want to go through a few of those. On the economic development side, town administration has continued to focus our efforts on stimulating economic development, including business retention, business attraction, and the expansion of businesses in the town of Auburn. We continue to meet with the Business Roundtable, which is a group of CEOs, general managers, and owners of both small and large companies in town to solicit their input, find out what the barriers are to doing business here in Auburn, and try to address those barriers before we have a concern with that business. All of this in order to support the businesses in town and to make sure that we keep our economic base stabilized. We're also working very much with the Economic Development Committee, which has worked with us to identify various opportunities and strategies to support economic development. We've also been applying for grants throughout the year, and I'll show you in a few minutes some of those grants, but the grants that we apply for from the economic development perspective are infrastructure grants to support the expansion of the industrial park or of a vacant parcel, beautification grants, planning grants, wayfinding grants, all of which lead to stronger economic development in the town. And we are also participating in a number of regional priority areas that I just wanted to make a mention of. The C-13 Prioritization Project is a group of 13 towns in the region that are working to identify priority preservation and development sites. We are recently approached by and will be working with the Blackstone Valley in South Central Mass on a brand-new collaborative initiative for economic development for the Blackstone region, including Auburn and other areas in Central Mass. And the, we've been working recently with Worcester and Shrewsbury to meet with various companies in the biotechnology, healthcare, and medical sectors to try to encourage new companies to come to this region. All of these efforts have been paying off, and I just wanted to show you a list of some of the projects that took place in the last fiscal year alone. Some of these are expansions of existing business, some of them are new businesses to town, and some are proposed projects that are underway. All of these will create jobs, expand the tax base, and stabilize our revenue stream from the commercial-industrial sector. Just as important as the economic development is creating a quality of life for the residents who live here, a sense of community, and making sure that we offer programs and events that benefit residents of all ages. This year, we provided a couple of new initiatives that you'll see on here, and I want to make a note that the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappus Recreation Complex, I had it on both slides, I had it on economic development and here because it truly is an economic development engine. Now that the Pappus complex is complete, and it's absolutely magnificent, we have been receiving many, many, many calls for regional tournaments, and we have hosted a number of events there that will bring visitors to Auburn. They will frequent our business establishments, they'll frequent our hotels and our restaurants, and it does drive economic development. Most importantly, it is also a wonderful facility for our children of all ages. We also, for the first time last year, we had the grand opening of the recreation complex, and for many of you who may not know, we did have the Mass Symphony Orchestra that allowed us to have the grand opening for the Riley Pappus Pavilion. The pavilion then had concerts every Thursday evening from the end of July through the end of August into the first week in September, free concerts open to the public. And again, this year, we've been able to secure grant funding to have those concerts again, and this year, we actually have a series of 10 weeks of concerts, starting, I believe, the middle of June and going until the end of August. For the first time this year, we also had holiday lights in all of our veterans parks, and we received a lot of positive feedback from that. The town looked absolutely beautiful. It highlighted the veterans parks, which we should be doing, and it also created a nice environment for those shoppers and visitors who come to Auburn to see that we do take pride in our community. We also had our first-ever tree lighting ceremony at the beautiful tree right beside the fire station. Special guest Santa had to come, and the children loved it. We had refreshments, music, entertainment, and it was just a great community event. We had our first skating rink that was built over next to Chuck's Steakhouse, and again, there's a partnership with the business. Chuck's Steakhouse allowed us to encourage people to park in their parking lot and go into use the skating rink, and then hopefully they would utilize the business when they were done. We actually had skating lessons there this year. It was a challenging year with the weather. It was a little difficult to keep up with all the snow that we received, but I think DPW did a great job, and the kids who used the rink had a wonderful time. Also, we continue to have our programs that we offer at the library, the senior center, and through the Recreation and Culture. This year, the Independence Day celebration, I just want to make a note that we're, for the first year, looking to do something a little different with Independence Day, trying to generate more attendance, make it better for the vendors, make it better for the residents who go. So we're moving it this year for the first time to the Pappus Recreation Complex, where there'll be fireworks accompanied by a concert right before the fireworks. So that is a change of location coming up for this July. Infrastructure investments. The town has made significant infrastructure investments in our local roads since back in the summer of 2011, we initiated a more than $3 million roadway improvement program. In addition to the Chapter 90 funding, the town has been allocating resources to the tune of $1.6 million in local funds, both through FY 12 and FY 13 to supplement the state's Chapter 90 funds. This supports the new roadway improvement program. It allows us to do additional work in town, and you can see the results of that work. I believe in FY 12, we did six miles of roadway improvements and another three and a half miles of roadway improvements in this current fiscal year. In addition, the town of Auburn has made other investments in infrastructure, and you will notice some new trees being planted. We just received a $10,000 grant from DCR to plant trees on town property, and we have another $10,000 grant pending that we hope to receive in July to receive additional trees that can be planted to beautify the town. Wanted to give you an update on the reorganization. Mr. Hussey did mention that as well. This year, the highlights of the reorganization that continue was the amended reorganization plan in June that the Board of Selectmen approved that allowed us to create two new units, Fleet Maintenance and Facility Management. This allowed us in October to get these units underway, and you may see many of our DPW workers working on capital projects. A number of these capital projects would have had to go out to bid, and some of them were beyond our means, and it would have been very expensive to do it had we not had the Facility Management Department doing the work for us. We envision down the road that we'll be able to remove some of the projects on the CIP list and actually get them done in-house. What you don't see is the Fleet Maintenance, because that is inside DPW, but they're doing a tremendous job. We moved a lot of the maintenance on our vehicles for police, fire, and DPW in-house to DPW, where they're now performing a lot of work on those vehicles on a regular basis. Our vehicles are being maintained better, it's costing us less, and we're able to control both the frequency of the repairs as well as the cost of those repairs. And lastly, we did bring custodial services in-house. We eliminated a number of contracts that were outside vendors. We did an economic analysis and determined it would be less expensive to the town, we'd have more accountability, and our buildings would be better maintained if we were to bring those services in-house. Last June, we were awarded the State Green Community Designation after applying for it. I think we were one of 103 communities in Massachusetts that have this prestigious designation. As a result of that, we also applied for a Green Community Grant that we were awarded in September in the amount of $165,550. This is going to enable us to implement some of the energy-saving measures in both town facilities as well as school facilities. And with a partnership with the school, and I have to say that the town administration and school administration have a terrific partnership. We work together on many things, and building maintenance is one of them, the green communities is another, and it is a highlight. We're going to be able to make some energy-saving efficiency decisions in our schools. We had a major audit that was done. We're now in the process of implementing that audit, and it will result in long-term savings on our utility bills. We also entered into a pilot agreement last year as a result of the town meeting vote and a net metering credit agreement with a solar developer. I want to mention that on this year's warrant, there is an article for a generic net metering credit agreement, and I just want to explain quickly that we did enter into the agreement with the developer. We were able to execute the pilot, execute the net metering credit agreement. The developer is still trying, is struggling actually, to get control over the land. There's no cost to the town, it's only a benefit to the town if the project goes forward, but if the project does not go forward, we want to be able to look at other net metering credit agreements that can reduce our electric costs by 12 to 20%, depending on what we negotiate. Grants this year, in fiscal year 13, we applied for 18 grants. 12 were awarded, five are still pending, and one was denied. That was in the amount of $10,000 for wayfinding signage in the Drury Square area. The total grants that we did receive that were awarded were $221,866. Additionally, the town was a participant on two regional grants, one for $115,000 for the Phase 2 of our stormwater management program, and the other $75,000 for technical assistance. We were one of 13 communities to receive that, to come up with a plan for prioritizing development and preservation sites. Boards and commissions, always important to the function of town government. First of all, I want to thank all of the board and commission members for all the hard work that they do throughout the year. Also, want to just make a note that we do, as every year, we have seats that are available, both through attrition and people moving around, so we do have seats, and we are always looking for applicants for those seats. Many of those seats will be due at the end of June, so if you could get your applications in or convince your friends and family and neighbors to consider serving on a committee, it's a great way to give back to the community. Just a couple of highlights, all of our boards and commissions do a great job, whether they're regulatory or advisory, but just wanted to let you know a couple of things. The Bylaw Review Committee is undertaking a comprehensive review of our administrative non-zoning bylaws. They've been doing this for about a year now, maybe a little over a year. They have all of the proposed revisions from all of the departments, including the Board of Selectmen, and during the course of the summer and fall, they'll be holding public meetings to solicit input from the residents as to what those proposed changes are. What we're trying to do is amend the bylaws so that they now coordinate better with the charter that was amended in 2009, as well as complement Mass General Law and any changes that have been made. Some of the bylaws are 30 or 40 years old, so they need some tweaking. The Open Space Committee is working to finalize an open space and recreation plan that would enable us to apply for additional grants from the Department of Conservation and Recreation at the state. And the Economic Development Committee developed a great strategy report on how to attract and retain businesses. They prepared collateral materials and brochures that we're using, and we're now working with them to develop both a social media policy as well as a social media site for businesses that are looking to potentially locate to Auburn. Wanted to make a note on public safety. We have a tremendous public safety, both police and fire, from K-9 units to SWAT teams to ambulance, EMTs, dive teams, technical training teams. We have very well-prepared and very well-trained public safety officials here in the town, and they do their job all year, and they do a great job at that. Emergency management. Emergency management, it seems like every year I stand here and talk about some weather event that we've had or some very difficult winter and once again, as you saw, we had a, it was a challenging winter from a weather perspective, starting in the fall with Hurricane Sandy, had several snowstorms after that, then a blizzard, then several more snowstorms. It was a challenge. We had record snowfall. You might forget because of all the snow, but last summer, we also had record heat. So in the meantime, our Local Emergency Planning Commission has developed a new shelter policy, so when we do have to open a shelter in any of these types of weather events, we're ready, we have the policy and we just need to implement it and put it into place. We've also received, we've been very fortunate and received a number of grants from MEMA for emergency management equipment, so our CERT team has been able to get the radios they need, we've been able to get trailers, we've also been able to get supplies for our shelters. We've been very fortunate in getting these grants. We also, just actually this afternoon, were approved for a debris removal trailer through Homeland Security, which will be a regional trailer and it will be housed here in Auburn and will give us the ability to address trees and other debris when we have storms. Communications, Code Red, we continue to use it. We've been paying for that through grants from the LCC as well as through the Emergency Management Planning Grant that we received, so there's been no additional cost to the town. It's been grant-funded through the state and through the LCC. That has a weather warning, a mobile alert, and a community notification system, all of which we've used for emergencies as well as those who sign up for community notifications, those are received as well. We also, this year, activated a local radio station, 1610, so in an emergency, you can tune into 1610 and get information on storms, anything with national grid, road closings or anything of that nature. Public policy and advocacy, we work hard throughout the year to track legislation that might have an impact on Auburn. We provide oral testimony at the State House, we provide written testimony on regulations or anything that might affect Auburn, gaming regulations, solar regulations, regulations related to zoning. We're trying to stay on top of all that. We participate on a lot of committees and in a lot of organizations to make sure that we know what's coming down the road, what's going to affect Auburn and whether we need to get out there and actively lobby for it or lobby against it. And we also have a very good relationship with our local delegation, both state and federal, where we watch the legislation on those levels as well. And lastly, finances, and I'm going to turn it to our CFO and Assistant Town Manager, Ed Kazanovich, but due to his leadership, he, we are in a very stable financial position. We've been budgeting very conservatively for the last few years. As you know, we're continuing to identify reforms that will give us savings. We do have the new financial policies that have been mentioned by Kevin and I believe Ed will be mentioning them. We did establish the OPEB fund last year, which is really critical. We're one of very few communities in the state to do it and it absolutely has to be done. There's a multimillion-dollar liability, up to $80 million liability for OPEB for communities that do not start to address it, so this is critical. And this past year, we really focused on our bond rating. We had an enhanced process. We maintained our AA3 bond rating and we hope in the future, we'll be able to potentially improve that. So thank you very much and I'm going to turn it over to Ed.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
Now, Mr. Kazanovich will make his report.
Chief Financial Officer. We have a lengthy warrant tonight, so I'm going to try to move quickly through about 18 to 20 slides and to be followed by Dr. Brunel, who has a presentation as well. The budget before you tonight is requesting total appropriations of roughly $54.3 million as the Chairman of the Finance Committee has spoken to earlier tonight. As part of that appropriation, it's met by the following local revenue sources. Local receipts, $7.7 million, cherry sheet revenue of $9.9 million, tax levy of $33.4 million, debt exclusion for the high school, $1.445 million, and available funds of slightly over $2 million, $2,117,000. Total revenue sources, $54,485,000 change, leaving an unobligated balance at this point in time of $197,000 in change. This would require total appropriation increase of 1.84% or $980,000. Total revenue increase of 2.21% or $1.2 million. These are the increases from current fiscal year to recommended in the 14 budget. You can see the total dollar increase or decrease and in the final column, the total percent change. Total general government would, as recommended, would be approximately $348,000 increase at 2.78. The budget before you tonight was formulated by the following elements. This budget incorporates the application of the adopted financial policies that were passed by the Finance Committee as well as the Board of Selectmen in the fall of 2012. It consists of 11 different policies. One of the policies provides for the elimination of the overlay surplus over a three-year period. The current funding for, the current fiscal year is 100, in this budget, is $130,000, down from 2013 funding of $200,000. The same for free cash. Current year, we're using 200, we're reducing it by 70 for a net of $130,000 to be used as a revenue source in the FY14 budget. This budget also utilizes 1/10 of the allowable 2.5 for capital budgets. That makes up about approximately $90,000. We are using a conservative estimate in this budget for our new growth at $400,000. Five-year average has been $624,000. It continues our commitment to our OPEB funding liability, which currently stands at $77 million for the second year in a row. We are appropriating $500,000 towards that funding schedule. This budget maintains all of our cash balances in our reserve and trust accounts. This budget does not currently have an earmark for the stabilization account. Given the uncertainty of the state budget, we will make in consideration for stabilization at the Fall Town Meeting. This budget uses state cherry sheet numbers as provided for by the House Ways and Means. At the time we put the budget together, we only had the governor's numbers. Up until the time we were about to wrap up the budget process, the House Ways and Means numbers did come out. I can tell you the difference between the governor's and the House Ways and Means was about $870,000. It's the conservative of the two numbers. Since you received your town meeting warrant, on April 29th, we received a final version of the House budget, which would earmark to Auburn $11,945,000 less than what we have in this budget before you tonight. So that $197,000 actually will go down by $11,945. There is still a Senate version of the budget to be released with a final budget, hopefully passed sometime in late June. We will make a correction and make considerations for whatever amount of money comes our way through the cherry sheet at a Fall Town Meeting. This budget uses about 1.65% of the allowable levy under 2.5. It increases the levy by approximately $293,000. And once again, we're using conservative estimates on the local receipt side of the revenue budget. The budget on the expense side provides for a 2% wage consideration for all bargaining groups. We are currently at the table with 11 groups. Contracts expire this June 30th. This does not imply that we are committed to 2%. We use that as a industry standard. Those values would have to be negotiated at the table. This recommended budget meets all current contractual and debt obligations. The budget also meets all current employee benefit obligations. This budget recommends under Article 3, a capital improvement plan totaling $2.2 million and as stated early, it leaves $197,000 less the 11 as unobligated or committed at this point in time. I showed you a little early on the general government side at 2.78% increase. The schools increase is also 2.78 or an increase of $603,000. As you can see, some of the other increases on a percentage basis as well as a dollar basis is identified in this slide, it is also part of what you have in your town meeting warrant packet. Total appropriations, if you look bottom, $980,000 or 1.84% increase. On a percentage basis, by function of government, this is how the budget is broken out. Education represents 42.9% of the total budget, followed by employee benefits at 15.64%. Public safety, 11.32%. Public works, DPW is 7.8%. Inspectional, economic services, less than 1%, .76. General government, 5.60%. Solid waste, 1.73%. Debt and interest, 7.93%. Human services, 1.60%. And assessments, offsets, overlay, CIP and articles at 4.73%. As far as tax levy is concerned, this is utilizing 1.65% of 2.5% of a potential $871,000. Its estimated new growth on a conservative basis is $400,000, consistent with the policy as adopted in the financial plan. It uses levy of $33,384,000 and change. Total levy available to be appropriated, $36,151,000. That leaves approximately a little less than 8% available. It utilizes 92.35% of the total levy allowed to be appropriated. Our available funds, as you can see, overlay surplus and free cash is down $70,000 in accordance with the policy. All of the others are available in your booklet. Total available funds of $2,17,241,75. Cherry sheet, once again, this uses House Ways and Means. Total value, $9.9 million. Local receipts, total $7.7 million. Some notables here, there is a anticipated estimate increase in solid waste. The matter is currently before the Solid Waste Committee. An analysis was submitted to them that shows that general government is subsidizing the operation of solid waste in excess of $100,000. That would require approximately a 12% increase in the trash fee for a break even. The matter will be discussed at a meeting to be held on May 20th with a recommendation to be, to go to the board sometime before mid-June. I can tell you that there has not been an increase in solid waste fee since 2004, that's 10 years ago. In the meantime, our contractual obligations with Whaler Brader have gone up by a value of approximately 3% per year and our collection has gone up with Central Mass and now currently Allied Waste over that same period of time. Our revenue as a percentage of breakdown, tax levy makes up approximately 61.27% of the total revenue. Cherry sheet state aid is 18.23%. Local receipts, 14.14%. Available funds, 3.7%. And debt exclusion for the high school, 2.65%. Total revenue, $54,485,000 and change. That translates to a total revenue estimated at 54, 485,278.55. Expense at $54,288,774. Unobligated balance of $197,270.81. This unobligated balance, as well as the expense, accounts for all funding articles that are being presented before you tonight. That includes Article 2, Article 3, or any other funding articles is built into this projection. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel, who will present the school side of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kazanovich. And now, we will hear from Dr. Brunel.
Did you have his on the stuff?
No, it's on there. Should might be that one right there.
This one here? I know we had climate warming, but I didn't know Auburn had a sea coast yet.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, School Committee, and all of those watching at home. As the proud superintendent of the Auburn Public Schools, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share with you tonight the school department's request for 2014. As Ken Blanchard said, genuine success does not come from proclaiming our values, but from consistently putting them into daily action. As a school department, when we began the budgeting process, as we have for the past five years, we looked to the priorities and the core values that we had established. Our overarching one is to respond to needs based on data. Additionally, to provide safe and respectful environments, our decision-making to be student-centered, high expectations for all, our dedication to continuous improvement continues, and equitable opportunities for all. Those core values not only drive the decisions that we make in our schools on a daily basis, but certainly drove the decisions made in the development of this budget while always asking ourselves the question, how will this impact students and their achievement? We set priorities as a school committee and a leadership team. Students obviously being our top priority as well as their increasing achievement, class size, textbooks, the Auburn Middle School building project, technology, safe environments, our commitment to continuous improvement, high-quality professional development, as well as our focus on the strategic plan and school and district improvement plans. We set a theme each school year and the one that we set for this school year is to strengthen connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Assumptions we made in the development of this budget. First, the issue of federal sequestration required us to prepare this budget anticipating a 10% reduction in federal grant programs, most notably Title I, Title II-A, and the 240 Special Education Grant. We assumed Medicaid reimbursement of $112,000. Circuit breaker, which funds for extraordinary special education out of district costs at 60% reimbursement. Our school choice levels were increased slightly by five. And we utilized offsets in all revolving accounts as well as the maintenance of our busing fee of $100 per student. As we've done, we, this process took on a multi-layered approach. First, the leadership team members met with their respective staffs and developed budget requests. They came then before myself, the town business manager, and the Director of Teaching, Learning and Curriculum. And then as a leadership team throughout the fall, we met to review our priorities and make sure that the budget request was in line with those, again, always asking ourselves the question, how will this impact students and their achievement? New staffroom requests included in this budget. We have a half-time French teacher at the middle school. We had reduced, if you remember, we had a full-time position two years ago. We brought on half-time position and this is to restore that. We're bringing on a grade-three teacher at the Julia Bancroft School to address class size issue. Two counselors, school counselors at the elementary school levels. We currently have half-time at each of those, so we make a full-time counselor there to address students' needs. Two special education instructional assistants that are required per individual education plans. A .75 district-wide technology assistant, a .25 district-wide custodian, and this actually doesn't reflect an increase in the budget, it will actually help us to reduce the overtime account there. A girls' ice hockey coach, that program was moved to the varsity level. A girls' ice hockey coach, that program was moved to the varsity level, and the coach continues to serve as a volunteer, as he has for numerous years. Nine middle school coaching positions that have been previously paid and supported by the parent organization, Arc Junior. Nine assistant high school coaches at the high school that are also currently volunteers in a fitness room support stipend. As noted, offsets were used from all of our revolving accounts, school choice funds, Medicaid funds, building rental accounts, all in an effort to minimize the impact of the FY two thousand and fourteen school budget. The school department's original request was twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, which represented a five point eight four five percent increase over the approved FY thirteen. We then, at the request of the school committee, created various scenarios that made increasingly deeper cuts to try and reduce the amount requested. The goals, however, of insulating our students and maintaining and moving forward in our programs was one that was always kept, as well as the non-tuition-based full-day kindergarten that you as town meeting members supported a couple of years ago and has, has been making tremendous progress. The leadership team then recommended, and the school committee does support, the FY fourteen operating budget of twenty-two million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which represents an increase of three point one four percent. However, because the state has not yet finalized its numbers, and in our strong collaboration with both the town's administration, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, the school committee does now, at this point, support a budget of twenty-two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And once firm numbers come in from the state, we will return at the fall special town meeting to get it to what the school committee had originally requested, pending your approval. The additional staffing requests that we will seek is for a half-time guidance slash adjustment counselor at the high school, a media specialist at the middle school, currently our only school in the district that has a media specialist, a librarian in it, is at the high school, as well as a point eight elementary library slash media specialist, and that person's job would be to spend one day at each of the elementary schools. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, the cumulative chapter seventy increase that has come to the town, but as education funding, has been two million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seventeen dollars. During that same timeframe, the Auburn Public Schools budget increases, and that does reflect through two thousand and thirteen, increases total one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. And I did not include FY fourteen in here, because those numbers, as Mr. Kazanovic and Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Hussey, others have indicated are not yet finalized from the state. Such increases, we believe, reflect our true commitment, and it is a true commitment, to work with the town as a whole, as we weather these fiscal challenges, and even as we hopefully are starting to, as a Commonwealth, climb out of them. Throughout the process, though, we have remained steadfast in our commitment to the mission of the Auburn Public Schools, which is to educate and prepare students for the challenges and opportunities of a changing world. To share with you some highlights, and this is certainly just a sampling of some highlights that are being realized across the district, because of the efforts of not only the leadership team, but every member of our staff, the APS team, as we refer to them, who really give a hundred percent of themselves every day to our students. We believe in the Auburn Public Schools that our students deserve the absolute best that we are able to provide to them. Here, in terms of recent college acceptances, and these are over the past couple of years, they range from American University, Texas A&amp;M, Holy Cross, MIT, WPI, Case Western, Purdue, Fordham, and the others that are noted here. Also, through the strategic use of various funds, grant funds, CIP funds, school choice funds, we have created technology-rich environments in which our students can integrate technology into the rigorous curriculum and coursework that we have prepared. We will be piloting a one-to-one implementation program at grade eight next school year, and we have a one-to-one implementation planning team, whose work is well underway in terms of making decisions as we've moved forward as a district. As I reported to you last year, in this current school year, we more than doubled the number of students taking advanced placement courses. We will do that same again next year, or almost do the same. We had ninety-six or so students last year, we had a little over two hundred that took AP classes this year, and we'll have nearly four hundred who will do so next year. We've added some advanced placement offerings, our goal always being, back to that theme, the strengthening connections through the rigor, the relevance, and the relationships. Our students continue to shine, both musically and athletically, winning many local and state competitions, and to that end, I would invite all of you, it is the Festival of the Arts and Technology on this Thursday here at the high school, in the gym in some adjacent areas, that will highlight our students' athletic, as well as music, and physical talents and technology. Our full-day kindergarten programming continues, and again, I thank you for your support of that implementation. We have the great benefit of having a school resource officer, and I extend sincere gratitude to the police department, as well as the town meeting, for supporting that individual in our school who does a great job. We're able to offer after-school and before-school programs to our students in grades K through five, and then at grade six for after-school programming, as well as a number of clubs and extracurricular activities throughout our grades. Our STEM, our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics offerings continue to grow. We've added probably eight this year across the district, and that is a continued focus of ours. Auburn Middle School, its designation as a STEM academy continues, and in fact, they'll be hosting a robotics club, summer camp this summer, which we're very excited to have happen. And data, as I had said back in the beginning, that we respond to needs based on data. Data is looked at at all levels across the district, and we utilize it truly to make decisions that not only maximize achievement, but always spend, always assure that we spend our dollars as wisely as possible. We feel tremendously thankful for the strong collaborations that we maintain with the town, both Town Manager Jacobson, CFO Kazanovic, but with all of the town departments. It truly is a team effort, there's great collaboration, and we believe, and I say that as a collective, we, that when we work together, great things can be accomplished, and I think that both in Mrs. Jacobson's report that she did, as well as I hope that you see some, some true advancements here, I think that we are reaping the rewards of that collaboration. The safety advisory team is comprised of police, fire, and school, and they meet on a regular basis, and I am very thankful for the recommendations that they bring forward. They are experts in their field, and we appreciate their commitment. The fire department has provided CPR and AED trainings for our staff. As I already mentioned, the police department provides a school resource officer. We have a great collaboration with the DPW, the press box that is nearing completion out on the, on the football field here. And I believe that we have a positive and reciprocal, I hope that it is seen as, as two-way, with all town departments, an ongoing collaborative dialogue, most especially with Ms. Kazan, Mr. Kazanovic and Ms. Jacobson, so, both of which we're greatly appreciative of. The continuous improvement, however, our top priority, the continuous improvement of our schools, for the benefit of our students, is our top priority, and I believe it is the top priority of the entire Auburn community. As I said before, our students deserve nothing less than the best that we are able to provide to them, and I thank you for your support. As Lee J. Colon said, and I have shared with you before, success is a reflection of your commitment to excellence. And on behalf of the Auburn Public Schools, I can attest to you that we are committed to excellence. And also, I thank you for your past support, and I hope your future support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Now, if you turn to page twenty-one and twenty-two, I will do the usual budget reading. And what I'm going to read are the figures on the far-right column under Finance on page twenty-one. And if you look on page twenty-two, there is another one of those Don Scrivener's errors, and Finance Committee recommendation should be on the far-right column. It isn't, it's sort of in the middle there, so I will be reading on twenty-two, that far-right column. Is that clear to all? Thank you. Okay, moderator total, two ninety-six. Selectmen total, ten thousand, nine eighty-seven. Executive office of Town Manager, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. Finance Committee total, eight hundred and fifteen. Oh, by the way, if, if there is any question on any of these, you would just say, hold, and we will mark it. Sorry about that. Reserve total, three hundred and fifty thousand. Finance Department total, five hundred and, can't see it, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine, five hundred and ninety dollars? Is that correct?
Five fifty-five.
Five fifty-five.
Five fifty-six.
Five fifty-five, five ninety-six. Damn gray is hard to read. Okay. Law total, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Human resources, forty-five thousand, five eighty-six. Informational technology, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five ninety-two. Town clerk total, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
One hundred and, did you say toll clerk? No, I said one thirty-eight.
I said one thirty-eight, did I say one thirty-nine? No, I'm sorry. Apology. Okay? All right. Town clerk total, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Election total, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Appeals total, ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Town hall total, thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. General services total, one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. School, twenty-two thousand, twenty-two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Twenty-two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Police, three million, seven hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Sixty-eight.
Five hundred and sixty-eight. You're right. I guess I needed a light. All right. Fire total, two hundred and, two million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Emergency management, ten thousand dollars. Bay path, eight hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifteen dollars. DPW department total, four million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Solid waste total, nine hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Develop slash inspection, four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Turning now to the next page, and again, in that, in that last column, let's see. Youth commission, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Historical commission, zero. Maturing debt, three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Interest, one million, seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Pension total, eight million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Bottom total, fifty-one million, six hundred and one thousand and twenty-one dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, the one I can't see. Okay. Department of Public Services, which is at the very top of the page, seven hundred and fifty-six, no, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Eight oh, eight hundred and nine dollars. Okay. Sorry about that. Are there any questions, now that we've read it? Mr. Olson?
Charles Olson, Precinct Two. I just have a question on the reserve total. There was an increase of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and I just don't know why we decided to do that.
As part of my presentation, I indicated there was a two percent consideration for all contracts that are expiring on June thirtieth. That two percent represents a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for all wages town-wide, excluding schools. That's the difference.
Okay, so it, or raises and things like that, or just wages?
It, it's, it's a wage consideration for those groups whose contracts are expiring at the end of this fiscal year.
Ms. Ethia?
Ellen Ethia, Precinct Five. I was just happened to notice that the Finance Department total, you have it five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. But you have one item in there at three hundred and fifty thousand, and another at three hundred and twenty-four thousand, and sort of looks like we have a error in our sum.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's an addition of all those other figures. Is that what you're asking, Ellen?
Yes, is it an addition of all those other numbers?
To get to that five fifty-five, is that all, the, the five figures before that don't add up to that, but they're not supposed to?
Oh, no, 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 it's, if you actually look below that, that's a new total. If you, if you look at the detailed budget, that goes beyond that, there's the accountant, treasurer-collector, assessor, that's the sum of all those three.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Was there anybody else? Was that you, Norman, or were you just waving at me? You have to get at the mic, please, identifying yourself.
Norm Bergeron, Precinct One. Under one fifty-one, law total, do we still contract for law, or is this what you're estimating it'll be?
No, we have a contract for labor council, as well as general council. I can tell you that all of the labor negotiations are currently being done in-house without the attorneys, so we're hoping to reduce that cost as it pertains to labor.
Okay, but we're putting in the one thirty-five now.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready now for a vote? We seem, all those in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, it is a vote. Article Three, to see if the town meeting will vote to approve a capital improvement budget fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, to determine what sums of money will be raised by taxation and appropriation, and appropriated, transferred from available funds, acquired by lease-purchase contract, authorized to be borrowed, or otherwise provided for, to fund the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen capital improvement budget, to determine under whose direction the expenditure of said funds will be made, and to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow money from time to time for notes, bonds, or notes in anticipation of bonds or revenues to be payable in not more than the term provided by law. Said borrowed funds, not to exceed such sums as the town may vote, or act on anything relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Yes.
Gail Metcalf, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting approve the five-year capital improvement plan for the selectmen, information technology, town clerk, planning, town hall, police, fire, engineering, highway, sewer, cemetery, senior center, elder affairs, library, parks and schools, as stated on pages sixty-seven through seventy-two inclusive, of the town of Auburn FY two thousand and fourteen budget and annual town meeting warrant, and further to approve an appropriation of two million, two, two thousand tw- no, two, yeah, two hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, to fund the FY two thousand and fourteen capital improvement program, as specified on pages sixty-six through seventy-two, under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendation, and to raise said sums by borrowing and appropriating the sum of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars from general fund revenues, thirty-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars from CIP expendable trust, eighty-four thousand, nine hundred revenues, 33,028 dollars from CIP expendable trust, 84,956 dollars from ambulance proceeds, and 120,000 dollars from sewer enterprise retained earnings. I also move that the town meeting authorize the borrowing of 1,577,667 dollars for a period of up to 10 years for the items as identified in the five-year capital improvement plan. I also move that the school department may, in its discretion and to the limits of its appropriation, transfer money between the line items identified on page 72 under the Finance Committee Recommendation column as deemed necessary. I further move that prior to purchase, over... all over-the-road vehicles shall be marked on both front door panels as property of the Town of Auburn for official use only, and have a permanently affixed town seal, and that the expenditure of funds so appropriated shall be under the direction of the chief procurement officer of the town or school department.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. Okay, now, this is a... by the way, this will be a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on this particular article? Seeing none, I’m going to ask first, is there any opposition to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of this article, it is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Mr. Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Tully, Precinct 2. I move that Article 36 be considered immediately after Article 19. Uh, there are personnel here who are going to make a presentation on behalf of this article, and I feel it would be in the best interest of the town meeting if it was moved forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Uh, Mr. Tully informed me of this, and I had three choices. I could have done this on my own. I could do it as we’ve done it now with Mr. Tully explaining why he wants this done, and I find that entire... according to town meeting, do I find that reasonable? Town meeting, town... yes, I do. So, we now have two choices. We can either accept what Mr. Tully says and let me move it, or we can have a vote. Which do you want? Let me move it? Okay, thank you. So, it’s moved. Thank you, Mr. Tully. All right. Article 4, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, William Byland, Precinct 2.
Mr. Byland.
Article 4, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year.
Thank you, Mr. Byland. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 4? Seeing no questions, again, this is, if we have to count it, a two-thirds one, so I’ll ask first, are there any objections? Anybody in opposition to Article 4? Seeing no one in opposition, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by raising your hands. It is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, we turn to page 73 in your book. Okay, page 73. Article 5, um, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs Formula Grant Funds, which funds the board determines to be beneficial to the town and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications or act on anything relative thereto. Ms. Proudie.
Beth Proudie, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including the Department of Elder Affairs Formula Grant Funds, which funds the board determines to be beneficial to the town and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications.
Thank you, Ms. Proudie. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, Article 5 is voted. Article 6, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid or at assessed value under special circumstances any properties which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax, title, foreclosure proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tom Healy, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid or at assessed value under special circumstances any properties which the town may have acquired or may here... hereafter acquire through tax, title, foreclosure, proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore.
Do I have a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 5? Seeing no questions on Article 5, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, Article 5 is voted. I’m sorry, Article 6 is voted too. Yes, all right, Article 6. Article 6 is voted. Oh, well. Article 7. Usually, I like to move ahead, not backwards, what can I tell you? All right, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensatory balance agreements during fiscal year 2014, as permitted by Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for banking services or act on anything relative thereto. Do... yes. Kevin.
Yes, John Calverly, Precinct 4. Um, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer and the town collector to enter into compensatory balance agreements during fiscal year 2014 as permitted by Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for banking services.
Thank you, Ms. Calverly. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 7? See... seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, Article 7 is voted. Article 8, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and Chapter 44, Section 53D, or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Michael Garland from Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to renew pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 71, the establishment of revolving accounts for the Auburn Preschool Program and the School Department Driver Training Revolving Account, the Athletting Revolving Account, the Food Service Revolving Account.
No excuse? Okay. Aunt Glade?
Well, I’ve got two motions on it. Um, I... the beginning motion I have says I move the town meeting vote to establish newer or renew a revolving fund for various towns and school programs as identified in the attached.
That’s correct. My apologies. Okay, and now you’re doing the attached. Yes, thank you. Okay, fine, thank you. Much atta... okay. Thank you. Continue. I’m sorry.
Thank you, that’s all right. Adult fitness programs, the tuition revolving account, transportation revolving account, summer school and summer school II revolving accounts, and the revolving account for tuition of state wards cherry sheet receipts. Further, I move that town meeting vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving fund for the council on aging, said fund to be used to supplement the council on aging building expenses with receipts from rental fees or donations, said money to be expended under the direction of council on aging with expenditures not to exceed 15,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving fund for the Auburn Police Department for general maintenance and expenses relating to false alarms and firearm licenses with expenditures not to exceed 35,000 dollars. All receipts in excess of current year’s operating expenses for personnel necessary for administration of said program shall revert back to the general fund. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account for the Highway Department to help defray the cost of removing yard waste with a sticker program with expenditures not to exceed 30,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account entitled Wiring and Gas Plumbing Inspection Service for the purpose of collecting all receipts and fees associated with said services, and further to pay for services of the wiring, gas, plumbing inspectors, and assistants as authorized by the Department of Code Enforcement with expenditures not to exceed 75,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account entitled Conservation Fees for the purpose of collecting all fees associated with said service, and further to pay for any contracted services authorized by the Conservation Commission with expenditures not to exceed 10,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account for the purpose of the demolition of structures or buildings deemed in immediate danger as authorized by the Department of Code Enforcement with expenditures not to exceed 25,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account for the purpose of supporting Town of Auburn recreational and cultural programs administered by the Department of Recreation with expenditures not to exceed 1% of prior year’s tax levy fiscal year 2013, which equals 338,319.47. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account entitled Waits and Measures Fees for the purpose of collecting all fees associated with the services provided by the sealer of waits and measures, and to pay for the costs associated with services provided by the sealer of waits and measures as authorized by the Department of Code Enforcement with expenditures not to exceed 20,000 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to authorize revolving account for the purpose of operating and maintaining the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex by collecting fees and rentals received from use of said facility and paying the expenses involved in the annual maintenance of said facility as authorized by an oversight board to be established by the Board of Selectmen, which expenditures... with expenditures not to exceed 338,319.47. Further, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services Division of Dog Officer pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of funding support and maintenance of the Town of Auburn Dog Kennel and those animals housed therein. The account will be funded through fees assessed in the daily operations of the animal compound with expenditures not to exceed 205,000... I’m sorry, 2,500 dollars. Further, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services Board of Health pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53, E and a half, for the purpose of financing flu clinics. Revolving fees... I’m sorry, reimbursement fees from insurance companies received by the town shall be credited to this revolving fund. The Department of Development and Inspeccional Services Board of Health shall be authorized to expend monies from this fund, and expenditure shall not exceed 2,500 dollars in fiscal year 2014. Further, I move... almost done. Further, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize revolving fund for the Department of Public Works Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of financing cement cremation vaults. Fees generated from the purchase of cement cremation vaults shall be credited to the revolving fund. The Department of Works Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery shall be authorized to expend monies from this fund, and expenditure shall not exceed 5,000 dollars in fiscal year 2014. Further, I move that town meeting vote to continue the revolving fund for the Auburn Parks Department, said fund established at the May 1st, 1997 annual town meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53D, for general maintenance of Memorial Park. Further, to continue the revolving account for the Auburn Parks Department for all fees received by the Parks Department for field use. All revolving accounts and funds to submit annual budgets reports to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, sir. Excellently done. Agreed. I think next year, what we’re going to do is get it printed out and hand it to people when they come in, and we can then not have to have somebody read the whole thing. Are there any questions on this? Yes, Norman?
Norm Bergeron, Precinct 1. I guess after hearing the litany of all these revolving accounts, I want to hear from somebody to tell us why we need this many, and where’s the oversight?
I think Mr. Kavlanovich probably is going to give you the answer you seek. I hope.
I agree. I wish there were, um, a number of accounts that, uh, we’re not added on an annual basis, but the law does provide for it. It is an activity that is supported by a fee. That fee is allowed to be set aside statutorily in support of that program. Uh, so, there is a statutory requirement that allows you to do it, not only on the general government side, but also on the educational side under Chapter 71. Um, these accounts have to be furnished to the Department of Revenue every year. That establishes a limit not to exceed a revenue and expense for that account, which you are voting on, because, as you see, each one sets a limit. And secondly, it’s audited, uh, it’s controlled through, uh, the accountant’s office. Cash is maintained through the treasurer-collector’s office. These accounts are audited on an annual basis. So, there is control over each and every one of these accounts.
Just going to ask you a follow-up question.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Sorry. Just a follow-up question on that. One of those accounts, somebody is authorized to spend over 300,000 dollars.
That limit is also set by the Department of Revenue. It states that you cannot exceed 1% of your total levy. That’s 1% of our current year levy. Uh, we do not expect the volume of receipts and expense to approach that limit, although, um, a revolving account such as the Pappas Recreational Facility could yield some substantial income and expense based upon rental of the facility.
And again, uh, they’re allowed to spend that entire amount, up to the 300,000.
Up to that amount. You can... you cannot expend more than what you have in the account.
Well, but 300,000.
Even though there’s a limit of 338,000, if there’s only 40,000 dollars in the account, you can only spend up to 40,000. It doesn’t authorize you to expend, uh, that total limit.
Okay.
It has to be... it has to be available for you to expend.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8? Wait a minute, did I get a second?
Second.
Second, just to make sure. Okay. Um, all those in favor of Article 8? All those opposed? Article 8 is voted. Article eight is voted. Article nine. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July first, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on Article nine? Mr. Anderson.
Just a quick question here. What is presented to me is not what you read and it says--
What were you given?
Well, it says Mass Highway Department, which I don't believe is accurate. It is now--
I moved that the-- with the Mass Highway Department and the other said Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Well, I'm taking for granted that this has been vetted by town council and that it is therefore an accurate motion. Ed? Is it? The motion says to authorize the town manager to enter into with the Mass Highway Department. The article read Mass Department of Transportation.
Mr. Moderator, the motion should read Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Could you make that change in your reading, please, John?
Sure.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention.
No problem. John Anderson, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you, John. Is there a second? There is a second.
And I have no other things here to read off.
All right. Too bad, huh? Okay, are there any questions on Article nine? Yes, Mr. Joinville?
Phil Joinville, Precinct Four. What might the contract or contracts be? And is there any pending projects?
What might contract or contracts be? Oh, Mr. Coyle?
Through the moderator, the other potential projects, even though we don't currently have any scheduled, would be if there's any enhancement funds or other funds available through Mass DOT and currently just Chapter ninety funds, although we are pursuing other funding sources.
All right, okay. Mrs. Joinville?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nine signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Thank you, it is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money if it becomes available from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Chapter ninety bond issued proceeds to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth general laws or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, Mr. Joinville?
Mr. Moderator, Phil Joinville, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money if it becomes available from the Commonwealth Department of Public Works Chapter ninety bond issued proceeds to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth general laws.
Okay, just a moment, please, Mrs. Joinville. Ed, we've got the same problem in ten as we had in nine. The article says, as people got it, Massachusetts Department of Transportation Chapter ninety. The motion says Commonwealth Department of Public Works Chapter ninety. Which should it be? Hmm? Okay, so we're making that correction. It's going to be from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Chapter ninety.
My end reads Commonwealth Department of Public Works.
That's right, it's going to take out Commonwealth Department of Public Works and replace it with Massachusetts Department of Transportation Chapter ninety. Okay.
Do I need to reread it?
No, no, I think-- is that clear to everybody? I just, we want to make sure that it's correct. Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article ten? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article ten signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article ten is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuitions and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district of special needs students or act on anything relative thereto. Article, yes.
Mr. Moderator, Paula Melikin, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuitions and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district of special needs students.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Paula, excuse me, Paula?
Yes, sir.
It has to be signed and given to the town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on Article eleven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eleven signify by raising their hands. All those in opposition? It is voted. All right, voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreation Trust Fund to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreational activities at the Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment, or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Bowling, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreation Trust Fund to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreation activities at the Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article twelve? Yes, Mr. Westerland?
I just have a general question to probably-- Mr. Kasnovich, how do we arrive at this number? The number was eleven thousand, six oh seven, then it was ten thousand, seventeen. Last year was eight thousand, eight sixty-seven, and this year it's six thousand, four ninety-nine. Is there a base or something that is behind that? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Westerland, we have five hundred thousand dollars set aside in a trust that earns interest. This is the yield on that on an annual basis. The rate of interest has been declining over the past several years.
Isn't that trust going down? Or is that--
No, it's a non-expendable trust, so it maintains--
That's the five hundred sixteen, seven eighty-six you just mentioned.
Five, yes, five hundred thousand dollars. So any interest that's accrued on that on an annual basis--
So what we're saying is the interest now is down, as low as our CDs?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
The market may be going up, but your interest isn't. Okay. Are there any other questions on Article twelve? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twelve signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article twelve is voted. Okay. Article thirteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars from McKinney vento receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen to fund transportation for students to and from school who become homeless during the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Jerry Balian from Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate twelve thousand, nine hundred seventeen from the McKinney vento receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen to find the transportation for students to and from school who became homeless during the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
I'm sorry, somebody has given you the wrong motion. No, no, because the motion that we're supposed to be voting on, at least that was handed to me, is I move that this article be postponed indefinitely. Does somebody have that motion?
I have it.
So we had two, sorry, we had two motions. Well, now this is the motion we want, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Moderator, Dan Carpenter, Precinct Five. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Thank you. And is there a second on that? There is a second. All right, all those in favor of postponing this article indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? It is voted to postpone the article indefinitely. Article-- Article fourteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Section four of Chapter seventy-three of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six and all subsequent amendments thereby increasing the exemption values by a hundred percent for Clause seventeen D, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two E, thirty-seven A, and forty-one C real estate tax exemptions for qualifying seniors of low income and disabled veterans for fiscal year two thousand fourteen or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Lena Rio Olsen, Precinct Two. Article fourteen, I move that town meeting vote to accept Section four of Chapter seventy-three of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six and all subsequent amendments thereby increasing the exemption values by a hundred percent for Clause seventeen D, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two E, thirty-seven A, forty-one C real estate tax exemptions for qualifying seniors of low income and disabled veterans for fiscal year two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article fourteen? To the microphone, Mr. Plutukas, please.
Paul Plutukas, Precinct One. Since I directly benefit from this, I would like to abstain from this one.
You don't have to.
I think I should.
I mean, that's your choice, but you do not have to abstain.
I think it would be the ethical thing to do because I directly benefit from it economically.
Okay, whatever, okay. So are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fourteen signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article fourteen is voted. Article fifteen. Moving ever ahead. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Weaver, Precinct Two. Article fifteen, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from general fund revenues to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article fifteen?
Doug Nelson, Laurel Street. This is a question for, I guess, would be Ed. See him getting up already. Earlier in the conversation, you mentioned that there was a hundred and ninety-seven uncommitted as of now. Does that mean that's a discretionary fund or where does that go exactly? That one ninety-seven thousand from earlier?
To be determined in terms of priority to be addressed at the fall town meeting. Since we don't have a final state budget, if the numbers should come in lower, it would give us flexibility to make an adjustment if, in fact, the revenue should decrease in the final cherry sheet.
So will there definitely be a fall town meeting then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I was going to say, you know, that could be added on to this amount, but maybe we can do that then. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Put that on your calendar, yes, there shall be a fall town meeting. Is there, are there any other questions on Article fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fifteen signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article fifteen is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from general fund revenues to the stabilization fund or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Moderator, Dan Carpenter, Precinct Five. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Carpenter is the king of postponing indefinitely this evening. Are there any questions on Article sixteen? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? It is voted to postpone indefinitely. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee to construct a new Auburn Middle School on the West Street site, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least fifty years, and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost, the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, fifty-eight point sixty-one percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA or act on anything relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Mr. Olsen?
Yes, Charles Olsen, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate the amount of forty-four million, five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars for the purposes, purpose of paying costs of building a new Auburn Middle School on the West Street site, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto known as the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least fifty years, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter forty-four or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the town incurs in-- in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that Auburn may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1, 58.61% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or 2, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereon days shall be subjected to, subject to and contingent upon affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law, 59, Section 21C, Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA.
Is there a second? There is a second. Now, I just want to let people know that the purpose of this, this is going to take a two-thirds vote, but the purpose of this motion is to authorize borrowing subject to approval by the voters of the town at the annual town election. In other words, voting for this this evening does not mean it happens, the voters of the town will then have a say in this matter. And so I will now let Mr. Mark Emcey, the Chair of the School Building Committee, give his presentation. Mark?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you said, I'm Mark Emcey, Town Resident, Chair of the School Buildings Committee. We're here tonight to give you an update. I thought it'd be an opportune time as we're really closing a chapter on the first phase of the Auburn Middle School project and moving forward. With me tonight, if we have questions, are OPM, our owner, project manager, Skanska USA, Paul Niedler, and then our architect, Eric Moore from Lammero Pogano, plus several members of the School Building Committee. So just to give a quick update history on what has gone on, back in about 2007, there was a, MSBA took over the process and the school department put in a statement of interest for all schools. They came out, ranked all the schools. The Auburn Middle School was the only school that rose to the top level in their rankings to be eligible for matching funds. So with that, we came to town meeting in 2011, May 2011, seeking funding for the feasibility schematic design phase with $600,000. Under that, we moved forward, we hired Skanska and LPA, and followed the MSBA guidelines through their steps, the required steps, you know, from a do-nothing scheme to a renovation of the existing school, addition renovations, new on the site and new on new sites. October of last year, at the special time we knew we came to you, informing you that our decision had come through and we're building new on a new site was the proposal, and we had come seeking funds be put aside for purchase of adjacent land to the Randall School to site the school. Through the final phases of the presentations to the state and stuff, on April 3, the MSBA's Board of Directors voted and approved our project scope and budget agreement, which we'll go over in a few minutes here, which kicks in our 128 days to have the town approve funding for the project to proceed forward. To recap, the, as I said, there was a feasibility schematic and design budget of $600,000, and as you can see, we have a contracted amount of 571, 881, we've invoiced so far 566, 298, and there's $5,500 roughly to be finished. There's some pending invoices, we haven't had a meeting recently, so we haven't approved those yet, but they will be. But we are under budget right now by $28,119 for the first phase. So the site that was chosen was adjacent to the Randall School. It's, the Randall School property by itself wasn't big enough, and we looked at the neighbor's property, it was owned by the Masonic Lodge. You've got West Street, South Bridge Street, Masonic Lodge, and Randall. Citing the two-story building on that site, the primary accesses are all off of West Street, coming in here, and there's an exit coming out here. There's also a secondary exit onto Masonic Circle, but that's recommended by the traffic engineers right now to leave that as a locked gate and only be used at special occasions. In the normal flow, the buses would come in, drop off and pick up on this side of the building. There's a canopy walkway, and then parents would come in the same way, proceed around the back of the building to the other side of the lobby, drop off there, and then they exit out on their own exit ramp out onto West Street. There will be some minor re-timing of lights, the West Street, South Bridge Street traffic signal for the hours of the school time. Another thing, we've got a multipurpose field here, there's a practice field to the side here. This little field down here is actually a school garden, it's part of the Green Mass Chips Building Initiative to help us earn extra credit for the reimbursement, and then we'll have an outside courtyard school classroom area out there. The floor plans, which you probably saw in February, or in October, are pretty much the same. The building is divided into two by the main lobby. Everything to the right is really your public spaces. You have your gym, locker rooms, we have the cafeteria, auditorium, band, and kitchen areas, and then purple is administration areas, and then we move back through a single hallway that leads back into the academic wing that can be locked off, so during public events and everything, they're all kept to the one side. The gym is a full-size gym, we do have several hundred seats for, bleachers for during basketball games, and it can be fully extended out onto the court so that the entire school population can be in one assembly together. That was a request that we're trying to maintain here. During school hours, the school will act as, pretty much as a high school does, all the doors will lock down. The one entrance coming in off of the West Street side will come in to a vestibule, there's a window into the office where they can pass their IDs, sign in, and then be buzzed through if they're allowed to go in the rest of the way. And that is through many meetings with the Public Safety Advisory, with the architects and building department, building people. There's a classroom is basically on each wing, or a class grade level is on each wing. There's seven classrooms and then two science classrooms that are back-to-back with a shared prep space, the special education space. There's added prep space for, for the teacher prep areas, shared for all the grades, and then on the first floor, we have mechanical spaces and some storage areas down here, and the tech, STEM, and technology labs back here in the back corner. The other thing that was actually pushed, it was brought up by one of our board members, but was trying to see if we could provide outside toilet facilities for the multipurpose field for non-school use, and we played around with it quite a bit and came up with a pretty ingenious idea of having just a doorway right here on the outside that comes into two toilet rooms, that comes into another hallway that can be locked off so that you can't get any further than just those toilet rooms from the outside, so during the non-school time use, it could be used as a, it can be used with the field. As we go to the second floor, just the upper areas on the gymnasium, cafeteria, auditorium, there's a media center, and then you have the two grade levels on either side that make up the same way with the seven classrooms, two science classrooms back-to-back, and then another technology lab up there. This is just a rendering of typical classroom size, it's about 900 square feet, it's larger than all the classes, classrooms that are, any of these classrooms that exist now at the middle school. Be all wired for technology, wireless and hardwired, those smart boards, and there's built-in casework that'll be in for storage and millwork underneath the windows. The windows all have shades on them so they can be drawn at different times, but it allows for natural daylighting and there'll be sensors on the lights too, when there's enough outside light that they reduce down in wattage so we don't use as much electricity. These renderings are, the top one is the main entrance, it would be the bus, the main entrance where you're coming in by a bus and the drop-off with the canopy, and the bottom is the southside entrance, which comes in from the, on the multipurpose field, which would be the parent drop-off, pickup and drop-off area. It's actually, as the roadway comes around there, it raises up so that the coming, started to cross that, from the plaza across into the athletic field is one level coming across, and no handicap ramps there, but it also acts as a speed bump coming around the building. This is just a rendering coming around the east side with the band room on this end. This is a rendering from the, looking down into the courtyard school, outside classroom area from the second floor. There'll be electricity out there and along with the wireless technologies so that the classes can continue from, you know, their full use of technology even outside. This is a motion rendering that's coming in, it's going to take you around the entire building. Randall School's right here, coming in off of West Street, coming into the main entrance where the schools, where the school buses are going to come in and drop off or pick As we proceed around, that's the gym, the locker room area is the lower area. Come around, you see the bump out for the band room, there's the receiving area for the kitchen, the kitchen areas and the cafeteria, auditorium area with some outside seating space as it's coming around to that southside entrance. And we're back, and we're coming back through the academic wing, and we'll come into the courtyard as we're coming around to see the outside courtyard and classroom space. So, schedule now, obviously, we're here tonight seeking the several motions that are out there. The May 21st, two weeks from tonight, we have the town vote for the debt exclusion to fund the project, and then hopefully with that successful vote, the design teams will go, immediately go into the design development and construction phase where we, through the early spring of next year, we'll have, we'll be bringing a construction manager on sometime late fall and get some of the early work possibly going, some fast track on steel and stuff, but the intent is to be open for the school year of August 2015, for the 2015-2016 school year. There's been many presentations that our design teams and architects and Dr. Benello have made over the past, past few months, we've been in front of the combined Board of Selectmen Finance School Committees, we've been in front of them separately, you can see that we've had their vote of support most recently. Including, there's been another 21 presentations made around town, including five right in the Auburn High School here, open to the public. We did the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, Senior Center, Life Care Center, Masonic Lodge, PTU groups. So, as you heard in the article, the total project cost right now at the schematic design phase is $44,511,234 with the MSBA contribution of 58.61 of eligible costs. As you'll notice, the 21, the $20,767 is not 58% of $44 million. They, you'll see in our bulletin, it points out at the bottom there that they cap costs on, or their participation on costs on anything over 8% of site work cost, the total construction cost, anything above $275 a square foot, and then furnitures and fixture equipment and stuff over and above $2,400 per student. Also inside that $44 million is a, about $4.7 million worth of contingencies. Now, at schematic design, we're about 30% complete on design, so there, you're, there's unknowns out there where it's not fully designed yet, so there's contingencies built in. As we move into design development at 50%, and then get construction drawings, all these contingencies will shrink down as we hope the real construction numbers shrink down too. So this is the maximum offset, and as the numbers shrink, all the contribution calculations all get redone at each phase with the state, so that these numbers will fluctuate a little bit as we move through the process. Also included within there is two alternates, one for geothermal wells for the, part of the cooling system in the building, and also synthetic turf field for the multipurpose field. We left them as alternates right now, but they're inside the whole project budget amount at the moment, and so when we go out to bid, we can get our best numbers on that and decide if we're going forward with that. Based on these numbers of the total, of Auburn's total contribution of the 23,743, through the help of Mr. Kavzunovich and stuff, we have looked at bond rates, just to give you an idea of what the tax impact would be, and we had done it at a conservative 3%, and we did a recent comparison, because they had one recently at a 1.859%, just to give a comparison of what it does to the values, and that's, and just picking on a single-family home property value, average property valuation of $222,000, the first year shows $46,000, $46 a year increase in tax, 52 for the second year, and then 175 for the three and 157 for the 1.8 for three-year, for years three through 20. It ramps up like that because you don't borrow all the money up all at the first, construction goes on, by the time year three comes, it's all built, and now you have all your costs in hand. I know that there were some handouts that had the charts that kind of, you could narrow further down on your actual, you know, valuation of your house to see what the impact would be for your particular property. Just as I, as I mentioned before, April 3, the MSBA Board of Directors voted, you know, the approval on the project, which set in a time clock and motion of 120 days for the town to seek, certify approval, and that's where the cycle we're in now. If the vote gets turned down on the 21st, we'd have to go through the steps, deliver to them, and there's a possibility that we could fall off the list and have to go back onto a statement of interest, and so hopefully the votes go in the right direction. As, I know we're breezing through all this stuff, there's probably a million questions, but as always, we have websites that are up and running. There's a project website directly that Skanska maintains, it has all our meeting minutes, all the, these presentations, and as well as renderings and everything else, you can get to it directly through this middleschoolproject.auburn.k12 MA.us, or you can go to the district website and you'll see a rendering of the Auburn Middle School project, and there's a link in there that takes you to this website where you can find all this And which leads, a question, a big question that everybody has in their heads, minds as to what happens with the former middle school at 10 Swanson Road when the new one gets built over on West Street. Back in the fall, the Auburn, the school committee put together a Auburn Master Building Plan Committee with 19 school and community members. They met to study this. I wasn't part of it, I know a couple of the board members were, but, or the committee members were, but, and they came back with a recommendation, and their recommendation was if the middle, if the West Street Middle School is approved and built, the committee recommends that the existing Swanson Road Middle School be used for grades three through five and that grades K through two be housed in two of the remaining elementary schools. We further recommend that the committee continue to work to determine which two of the four remaining schools will be used for K through twelve, K through two students and identify means and procedures to take the two remaining schools offline. That was unanimously approved by the school committee on April 3. And finally, I'd just like to take a quick second to acknowledge the, everybody that is on part of the School Buildings Committee and the hard work that they've done to date, and hope that we are going to be moving into our next phase as we continue on here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emcey. Just in case, Mark, do you want to stay, Mark, do you want to stay there? Are there any questions? Are there any questions for Mark? Yes? Not for Mark? Okay.
Tom Healy, Precinct 5. On one of the slides, you showed there were three benchmark numbers from the Mass School Building Authority, that if we exceeded, they would not be eligible for reimbursement.
Right.
Okay. So, the overall project cost showed about $9 million that was not considered for reimbursement. What is the driver of that? What, what, one of those three benchmarks are we exceeding? There was 8% site work, there was 275 per square foot.
All, all three of them are in. We're over on site work, which almost every project that goes through MSBA is. We're over on the square foot costs right now. But that's, I mean, again, I mean, I think Scanzer can, would reiterate it too, that, you know, that's a, we're there. I think we're going to get closer to the number, but we're not going to get all the way back to 275, I don't think, but they're, they're using older numbers. And then the, my third one.
So, so you feel the benchmark numbers-
Oh, the FFND, I think there's a little bit of technology stuff that we have in there that is not going to, you know, not being covered.
So, you feel the benchmark numbers are not realistic that, that they have represented?
It, it, it's what they, it, that's their rules. That's, those are the numbers they have. They haven't updated them since they came into existence in 2006, 2007, and that's where we're working toward.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Mark. Anybody else? No, you had a-
I have a question on the funding matter.
Okay, then, Mark, I guess that'd be for Ed, so just stay close in case, all right? Yes?
Mike Hammond, Precinct 2. I'm just curious as to why we're so intent on going with the debt exclusion as opposed to using the excess levy. I know this has been brought up at some of the selectmen's meetings and the other meetings, but it seems like we built the tax levy excess for this purpose, and now we're not using it. Doesn't make sense.
Mr. Hammond, what I could tell you, there were a number of joint meetings, and a number of options were presented at those joint meetings, one of, one of them being excess levy. The vote was to bring this to the voters as a debt exclusion vote. I can tell you, there was no vote that, that committed excess levy for this project.
I, I agree. What, but what I want to know is why didn't we put on a ballot, excess levy and/or debt exclusion, which would the voters prefer to use rather than throw all our eggs in that one basket? If, if, right now, if this doesn't go through, the project's going to have to go through an emergency meeting or something. Whereas we, we did a referendum on it, and if lawyers decided to use excess levy, we'd be golden, as opposed to two and a half.
All I can tell you is all options were provided to all boards and committees, and the vote was to do it as a debt exclusion vote. Ballot vote to the voters.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds. So, all those opposed to this article signify by raising their hands? Okay, so we're going to have to count. Would the counters please come? So now we'll do it, you know, all in favor and so forth. Okay. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by raising their hands. On the over on the right, if you're in favor, raise your hands.
We're all set. We're all set. We got the count.
23.
23 on the right.
35.
35 on the middle.
24.
24 on the left. All those opposed, please signify, please raise your hands. We have to count the opposed. Everybody counters? We have to count the opposed. One?
Yeah.
What's more on the opposed in the middle, please?
Zero.
Three.
Three in the middle, zero. Article 17 is voted 82 in favor, three oppose, uh, three opposed. Is that correct? No. There was one. Four opposed. Yeah, wasn't there one? Yes. Eighty-two, eighty-two in favor, four opposed. Okay, fine. Article 18. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $325,000 from the stabilization account for the acquisition of 6.50 plus or minus acre panel owned by the Auburn Masonic Charitable Association, Inc., for the proposed Auburn Middle School project subject to a favorable debt exclusion vote to be held at the May 2013 annual town election or act on anything relative thereto, Mr. Hamel.
I move that the town meeting vote to approximate the sum of $325,000 for the stabilization account for the acquisition of 6.5 plus or minus acre parcel owned by the Auburn Masonic Charitable Association, Inc., for the proposed Auburn Middle School project expenditure, which is subject to a favorable debt excursion account to be held at May 2013 annual town election.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 16? Again, this is two, I'm sorry, 18 here. On Article 18, are there any questions? Okay, this again is a two-thirds vote. All those opposed to Article 18 signify by raising their hands? Seeing no one opposed, all those in favor of Article 18. Thank you. Article 19. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute deeds for the acquisition of a 6.5 plus or minus acre parcel owned by the Auburn Masonic Charitable Association, Inc., for the proposed middle, Auburn Middle School project subject to a favorable debt exclusion vote to be held at the May 213 annual town election or act on anything relative thereto. Do I have a motion? I do. Ah, Mr. Carpenter.
That's my favorite article tonight. I move, Dan Carpenter, Article, Precinct 5, I move that the article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? There are all those in favor of postponing indefinitely signify by raising your hands. It is voted to postpone indefinitely. And now, Article 36. Remember, we moved Article 36 up? Well, here's where it is. So, this is on page, it's on page, yes, it is, on page something, page 77. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article 3 of the May 2012 Annual Town Meeting, from line item Auburn Public Library Capital Funds Ceiling Fire, Ceiling slash Fire Suppressant of $250,000 for the following building repairs and upgrades to the Auburn Public Library. And those are roof replacement, $115,000, window slash blind replacement, $60,000, carpet slash flooring slash shelving move, $25,000, resurfaced parking lot, $25,000, interior painting, $25,000, or act on anything relative thereto. Reverend Knight.
Dennis Knight, Precinct 3. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article 3 of the May 1, 2012 Annual Town Meeting, from the line item Auburn Public Library Capital Funds Ceiling slash Fire Suppressant of $250,000 for the following building repairs and upgrades to the Auburn Public Library. Roof replacement, $115,000, window and blind replacement, $60,000, carpet flooring shelving move, $25,000, resurfaced parking lot, $25,000, and interior painting, $25,000.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. And now, the librarian, Ms. Ramsey, will come and tell us what this is all about. Yes, oh, yes, down here, please. Right to the front, please.
Thank you. My name is Diane Ramsey.
Excuse me, why don't you do it up, really up front so everybody can, no, you're around, yeah.
The Board of Trustees of the Auburn Public Library and the library director are requesting this amendment to cover critical and long-delayed repairs and upgrades to the library building. The funds, the items to be funded in this warrant amendment are listed in priority order. The amounts are based on estimates that I've received over the last three or four months. These jobs have not gone out to bid due to the need to receive approval from the town meeting. Therefore, the actual amounts are not set at this time. However, the money will be used in priority order to ensure that the funds are available for the most critically needed articles, that the most, the highest priority is the roof, and then the library windows, the library flooring, the parking lot, and the interior paint. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes. Ms. Belluma. Won't stay there, please, Diane.
Well, you know, I have to ask, why is the fire suppression system not being, the money not being used?
The lowering of the ceiling and the fire suppressant were requested several years ago. They are not as high priorities as the integrity of the building itself, so at this time-
So, that was just to lower the suppression system itself?
That was, that was to lower the ceiling, and when the ceiling was lowered, to include more fire, a new fire suppressant system. That won't be needed if the ceiling is not lowered.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those opposed to Article 36 signify by raising their hands? Seeing no one opposed, all those in favor of Article 36, please signify. It is voted unanimously, thank you. Article, Article 21, I guess, 20, Article 20. Back to page, whatever page, 75. Okay. Here we go. Going to be a lot of postpone indefinitely's coming. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from general fund revenues for the purchase and installation of town gas fuel tanks or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Carpenter?
There is. I think you know what it is, to postpone Article 20 indefinitely.
All right. Is there a second? All those in favor. It is voted. Article 21. To see if the town meeting will vote to enter into a long-term lease with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts District Highway Department for the purpose of utilizing their fueling depot or act on anything relative thereto, Mr. Carpenter?
I motion that the article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are all, all those in favor of postponing indefinitely, it is voted. Article 22. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from general fund revenues to upgrade the fuel pumps at the Massachusetts District Highway Department that would allow the town to fuel all its municipal vehicles or act on anything relative thereto, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we postpone this article indefinitely.
And are there any second? All those in favor of postponing, it is voted. Okay, now back to business. Article 23. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $5,000 from the cemetery perpetual care account for a match of funds available under a state grant for the construction and/or restoration of Civil War monuments or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Frost.
Ken Frost, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $5,000 from the expandable trust cemetery perpetual care account for a match of funds available under a state grant for the construction and/or restoration of the Civil War monuments.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 23 signify? All those opposed? It is voted. Article 24. To see if the town meeting will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21, to discontinue slash abandon and to convey a portion of the right-of-way located at the corner of Oxford Street and Linda Ave. The portion to be discontinued slash abandoned and conveyed is located on Assessors Map 55 and is bordered on the west by Parcel 11, on the east by Oxford Street, and on the northeast by Linda Ave, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Elizabeth Johnson, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21, to discontinue slash abandon and to convey a portion of the right-of-way located at the corner of Oxford Street and Linda Avenue. The portion to be discontinued slash abandoned and conveyed is located on the Assessors Map 55 and is bordered on the west by Parcel 11, on the east by Oxford Street, and on the northeast by Linda Avenue.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
Tim Malone, Precinct 4. What is precipitating this amendment of the right-of-way?
Okay. Does somebody have an answer? Yes, somebody has an answer and is coming forward.
It's an abandonment of a portion of the right-of-way. A business owner approached the town about a piece of land that they felt would enhance their business. It's as yet defined in size, but it's a portion of a right-of-way that is not being used by the town. It's essentially excess land from road realignment with the installation of 290. So, rather than costing the business funds to survey and identify exactly the size, we wanted to get town meeting's approval to negotiate, discontinue, and convey, and then put the onus on them to identify what the actual size and bounds of it are. But, working with the DPW, we won't allow it to interfere with the town's continued use of that right-of-way.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 24 signify by raising their hands? All those opposed? It is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5N of the General Laws to establish a program by vote of the Board of Selectmen, allowing veterans as defined in Clause 43 of Section 7 of Chapter 4, to volunteer to provide services to that city or town in exchange for reduction in their real estate property tax obligations or act on anything relative thereto. Ms. Ethia?
Ellen Ethia, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5N of the General Laws to establish a program by vote of the Board of Selectmen, allowing veterans as defined in Clause 43 of Section 7 of Chapter 4, to volunteer to provide services to this, to that city or town in exchange for a reduction in their real estate property tax obligations.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 25 signify by raising their hands? All those opposed? Article 25 is voted. Article 26. Article twenty-six. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a net metering credit agreement, a solar power purchase agreement for a term of up to twenty years with the right to renew for up to two additional five-year terms with an appropriate and properly vetted partner or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, Mr. Moderator?
John O'Day, Precinct Five. I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a net metering credit agreement or solar power purchase agreement for a term of up to twenty years with the right to renew for two additional five-year terms with an appropriate and properly vetted partner.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article twenty-six? Yes, Ms. Ethia?
At last year's town meeting, we had discussion about a solar farm going up on Leicester Street. Is this what we're referring to now?
Yes, Ms. Jacobson.
Through the moderator, no, this is not. Last year, town meeting approved of two net metering credit agreements. One was for a solar facility off of Leicester Street, and one was to purchase energy at a reduced rate through a net metering credit agreement for a solar facility that was going into the town of Leicester. This is a separate net metering credit agreement with a as-yet-to-be-identified provider. Since last year, we have been approached, the town has been approached by about five different solar developers who have various solar farms that are going up all through the state. Several communities have taken advantage of the discounts that have been offered, and we have not been able to take advantage of those discounts because we don't have town meeting vote to do so. Many times, the developers will come to us and they say that they have, they're seeking offtakers of the energy that's generated from the facility, and the savings range from twelve percent to eighteen percent annually for periods from ten to twenty years. And the town of Milbury recently went on to the one from, that we had approved last year that was going to be in the town of Leicester, and there was a separate solar facility that they were developing in another part of the state, and we were not able to take advantage of those savings because the town meeting vote was so specific that we had to have the net metering credit agreement with a facility that was built on the site that was identified. So this is to give us the opportunity to negotiate and meet with various solar developers and try to get the best deal for the town. The savings range from one to four million dollars over twenty years depending on the amount that can be negotiated with the providers. That amount will probably start going down over the next few years because the federal credits for these types of programs are starting to decline, but nonetheless, there are still opportunities for the town to save on energy. So this is a generic vote to allow us to negotiate with potential solar developers so we don't miss the window to sign on to them, having to wait for either six months or a year for a town meeting vote.
So does this mean, then, that the solar farms could be located in any place in the state, and we would be buying power from them?
Through the chair, it all depends on what, what developer comes into us. We have a developer that is locating one in Rutland that's interested. We have two other developers that are putting up facilities in the western part of the state. They can be located anywhere in the state, and they're looking for offtakers for the energy. There is no cost to the town to do this, there's a savings to the town to do this. These are not for facilities that are necessarily located in Auburn, they could be anywhere. Some may be located on town property in other communities.
Okay, I'm, I'm just here to make a request again that if we do consider doing something in a town instead of strip-cutting wooded areas that we look at, our old landfill. I did some research in the past year, and that's part of the recommendations from the federal EPA that they look into, land that is not in residential neighborhoods, land that is not, you know, prime land, but land that is more on that second-class land as we could call the landfill. So I think that, you know, we have a spot that's, we wouldn't have to do so much work for if it had to come in the town. I would just hope that we could keep that in consideration.
Through the chair, we consider, we're looking at a number of different solar opportunities that are available to the town. The landfill right now, because we're working with DEP for some remediation on it, is not, we're not able to do that quite yet, but in the future, we may be able to do that, and it may be something worth looking into. Where it's a little premature right now, given the status of the landfill, that we can't do that. But these net metering credit agreements, just to be clear, this is a net metering credit agreement that the town would enter into to save electric costs. So the cost of the electricity that we're purchasing would be through a third party, there would be a discount on the cost to the town from municipal, the municipal cost for this. Separately, if a solar developer were to come into the town of Auburn, they would still have to go through the permitting process, whether it be through Planning Board or ZBA, depending on the project. So that would still have to have another whole set of approvals. This is just strictly for the ability to enter into a net metering credit agreement, similar to the ability that we now have to enter into an agreement as we did with the school department for the purchase of fuel. We're able to join through the superintendent's effort, join in on the school department's collaborative effort with other communities to purchase our fuel at a reduced rate. This is a very similar concept.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-six signify by raising their hands? All those opposed, Article twenty-six is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development, Development and Inspection Services Board of Health pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, for the purpose of supplying appropriate legal disposal containers for disposal of household medical shops with revenues gained from the sale of these boxes to be used to sustain funds for the account, to the account or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Proudie?
Mr. Moderator, Ron Proudie, Precinct One. I should warn everybody before we make this, this would be another and further on Article eight next year, wouldn't it? I move that the town meeting vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, for the Department of Development and Inspection Services Board of Health, the Department, for the purpose of collecting fees received from the sale of legal containers for the disposal of household medical shops, to credit any revenues received to the Department and to authorize the Department to expend funds with expenditures not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven signify by raising their hands? All those opposed, Article twenty-seven is voted. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspection Services Board of Health pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, for the purpose of abating public health nuisances and causes of sickness as authorized by Mass. General Laws, Chapter one eleven, Section one twenty-five within the town of Auburn that otherwise cannot be corrected. Collection of liens placed on properties for the cost of abating the nuisances and causes of sickness will be credited to maintain the account or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, a motion, please.
Francis Hoy, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty-four, fifty-three and a half, for the Department of Development and Inspect, Inspection Services Board of Health, the Department, for the purpose of abating public health nuance, nuances?
Nuisances.
Nuisances. And the causes of sickness in the town that otherwise cannot be corrected as authorized by MGL, Chapter one one one, one twenty-five, to credit revenues collected from the liens placed on properties in accordance with said law to the Department and to authorize the Department to expend funds not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, yes. Mr. Nelson.
What type of sicknesses and nuisances are being caused here? What is, what is this about?
We are going to have somebody describe nuisances and sicknesses for us. Mr. Pelletier?
Well, specifically, what types of nuisances and sicknesses are we going to be putting liens on people's property for?
Yeah, I think, I, no, I, I think we understood. Yes.
Massachusetts General Law, one eleven, one twenty-two allows that boards of health shall identify and look into the causes of sicknesses. The courts have been very liberal in the interpretation of this law. The nuisances we're specifically looking at are those properties where we can't find the owners or the owners are not financially capable of dealing with the problems. The Board of Health this year gave me a goal to address the vacant properties in town, these properties that were getting multiple complaints on regarding, it's open, the kids are going in there and partying, the property is a mess. What this will allow us to do is, once we've expended the enforcement procedures, once we've gone through the court procedures, when we can't identify owners, it will allow the town to move in and actually do the abatement on them.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-eight signify by raising their hands? All those opposed, Article twenty-eight is voted. Article twenty-nine. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate two thousand five hundred dollars from general fund revenues to initially fund the proposed revolving account to be established for the purposes of abating public health nuisances and causes of sickness as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter one eleven, Section one twenty-five within the town of Auburn that otherwise cannot be corrected or act on anything relative thereto. Reverend Knight?
Dennis Knight, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate two thousand five hundred dollars from general fund revenues initially to fund the proposed revolving account to be established for the purpose of abating public health nuisance and causes of sickness in the town that otherwise cannot be corrected as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter one 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 one, Section one two five.
All right, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Kazanovich has a question, an answer. What?
Mr. Moderator, I think there's a second motion to postpone this indefinitely because twenty-five hundred dollars was appropriated in the operational side of the budget as a startup. It's called nuisance remediation, twenty-five hundred, is that correct, Mr. Pelletier?
It is, and I apologize for not having the motion to continue or continue indefinitely before us, but I didn't know if the budget was going to be approved, so I had to leave it on in consideration that the budget might not have been approved as it sat.
So you want a motion to postpone indefinitely?
Correct.
Mr. Carpenter?[1413.83][1413.83](Laughter).
We need you.[1418.21][1418.21](Laughter).
Here we go. This is our town expert on indefinite postponement.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we postpone Article twenty-nine indefinitely.
Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, it is voted to postpone indefinitely. And now, since Mr. Carpenter is already here, we come to Article thirty. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article twenty-nine of the May five, two thousand and eleven annual town meeting as follows. Nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents from mapping for fiscal year twelve to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park or act on anything relative thereto. Ah, Reverend Knight?
Mr. Moderator, you have an interloper.
Yes, Lord.[1479.33][1479.33](Laughter).
I, I move that this article be postponed indefinitely, Dennis Knight, Precinct Three.
All right, is there, yes, there's a second. Is there, all those in favor of postponing indefinitely? All those opposed, it is postponed indefinitely. Mr. Carpenter seems to have lost his position, what can I say? Article thirty-one. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP article of the May third, two thousand and one annual town meeting as follows. The balance of four hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-one cents from black topping to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Natoli?
Okay, Dennis Natoli, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article four of the May third, two thousand and one annual town meeting as follows. The balance of four hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-one cents from black topping to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds again. All those opposed to Article thirty-one signify by raising their hands? Seeing no one opposed, all those in favor, it is voted unanimously. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article seventeen of the May first, two thousand and three annual town meeting as follows. The balance of one thousand twenty-five dollars and two cents from replacement windows to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park or act on anything relative thereto. Reverend Knight?
Dennis Knight, Precinct Three, and I strike again, I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
All right, is there a second? There is. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely? All those opposed, the article is voted. Article thirty-three. Rounding third and heading home. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Articles three of the May first, two thousand and twelve annual town meeting as follows. The balance of one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents for zero-turn mower in the DPW Cemetery Division capital budget to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park or act on anything relative thereto. Do we have a motion? Um, well, um, Norman, you got one, no, here, Norman?
I'm postponed, Jeff.
No, it isn't.[1662.33][1662.33](Laughter). No, it's not, here. Would you pass this to Norman, please, he's going to read it. To the microphone, please. No, this is not postponed.
All right. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article three of the May first, two thousand and twelve annual town meeting as follows. The balance of nineteen forty-five, fifty, one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents for zero-turn mower in the DPW Cemetery Division capital budget to Musco lighting account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Again, this is, are there any questions? Again, this is a two-thirds, so first I'll ask, is anybody opposed to Article thirty-three? Seeing no one, all those in favor, voted unanimously. Article thirty-four. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Rithel Street as a public way from Oxford Street to Vine Street for a distance of approximately seventeen hundred feet or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Amy Sullivan, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Rithel Street as a public way from Oxford Street to Vine Street for a total distance of approximately one thousand seven hundred twenty-two feet as shown on a plan prepared by Collin and Engineering, Inc., entitled Rithel Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated June nineteen sixty-eight and recorded at the Worcester, Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book three hundred and twenty, Plan Six.
Is there a second? Please, I'll give that to the town clerk. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-four signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, Article thirty-four is voted. Article thirty-five. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Perry Place as a public road, not a private road, or act on anything relative thereto. road, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Jeff Slomsky, Precinct 2. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Perry Place as a public road extending from Perry Street to the end for a distance of approximately 920 feet, as shown on a plan prepared by R.B. Cullen and entitled "Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, Perry Place," filed January 19, 1942.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Coyle has a, something. Question, an answer to a non-question?
Through the moderator, I just wanted to raise a couple of concerns that I had regarding this, this article. Perry Place is approximately 920 feet in length. It is a private road. The town of Auburn does have about 70 streets that are private roads, so I'm concerned with accepting this roadway as a town roadway. Again, it's a dead-end street, does not have a defined cul-de-sac at the end of the roadway. There is no right-of-way that has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds for this section of roadway, and I just want to caution town meeting members that if we accept this, we have, again, 70 other roads in town that are private, and I think it may set a precedence. Roads that have been brought before town meeting members in the past that either I've been in support of or haven't had any issues with have been roadways that have gone before the planning board that have been built in accordance with planning board standards. This particular section of roadway, I don't believe has gone before the planning board with a defined construction, defined. There's no sidewalk, no drainage, no berm. It was essentially a private road that had been paved. I will, will say that there was monies in the past, I think back in the 1960s, that town meeting members had appropriated somewhere in the vicinity of 200, 2,500 plus or minus to pave this section of roadway, but my recommendation would be not to accept Perry Place at this time. Thank you.
Can I just, before you leave, does anybody know whether the planning, normally we want the planning board to have accepted, has the planning board acted on this? Yeah, that's what I thought. I was told when we discussed, ah, Mr. Bernie, because I had asked that question, was this accepted by the planning board?
This is a different case than you normally see with new subdivision roads. In recent years, you've seen a mixture of old subdivision roads and subdivision roads that were recently constructed. This one actually predates the acceptance of subdivision control in the town of Auburn. So the planning board did submit a report to the selectmen. They felt that based on the, it being the only access to and from Perry Place, that they would support the selectmen laying it out and forwarding it to town meeting, but they haven't reviewed it the same as they, they had Regis as one that's come before the town meeting recently or Bridle Path. Those were very recent constructions. They went through the recent subdivision process. So this is, this is a little bit of an anomaly, and it's brought by a citizen petition, whereas the others are generally brought by the developer.
But there are, some people weren't even born in 1942, I've been told, yes.
I would be one of them.
I knew that. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, Ms. Holstrom. I, who have.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Okay, now, Ms. Holstrom is moving to postpone Article 35 indefinitely. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak before it gets moved.
Before it's voted, you mean, you'd like to speak?
Yes. Dan Lajest, Precinct 4. The street was good enough for the town to pave it back in the '70s. It is good enough for the septic, for the Auburn Saw Department, to use it, to run the saw line down it, which the neighbors at number 29 and number 31, Don Downer and Paul Dackery were kind enough to extend the saw line out of their own pocket because the town did not want to do it. The town, back in 1978, I believe, took Don Downer's property without consent, filled in the swamp, and put a turnaround in there for the purpose of the town to use. So I'm asking you people, if the town is nice enough to do all of those things, but not maintain it and just forget about it. It was paved, I believe it was in '72, the septic went in, all the way except 200 feet of it. They put the saw in, paved it, put the turnaround in, and now they're saying, I just want it to be maintained and upgraded, go to a public way. That's all the neighbors are asking for and the people on the street are asking for.
All right.
Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. My question is for the DPW director, and it is, what would be the process to, I guess, get the road to a condition or the process where it would be more acceptable to DPW? Or would that be coming back with a budget item to allocate funds to improve the roadway? Or what would be the preference, I guess, of DPW to get this accepted as a public way?
This is something that I've had discussions with the town manager and with the CFO on. Because there are so many private roads in town that aren't in a condition where we would normally accept and haven't gone through the planning board process, similar to what the city of Worcester does with abetment process, it's something that we could pursue. So this may be something we may want to look at that. This roadway was paved years ago, back in the early '70s. There is a sewer easement that was, that the town does have for the first 650 feet of the roadway. The purpose of that easement, just for clarification, is for us to maintain that sewer line. But again, to answer your question, it would be through abetment process that I'm not really able to discuss too much tonight, but I know the city of Worcester and other communities do that.
So we currently don't have a process in place for evaluating? Because it seems like there's an awful lot of roads in town that aren't town roads that become surprising each, each meeting, like Perry Place, for example, is, you know, it's a 70-year-old road at this point, and there needs to be, I guess, a process in place for the DPW to either say, when somebody petitions, to either say, yeah, this is something that we would be able to take on before bringing it to town meeting, or to say, look, here's a process that we need to go through to get to the point where it would be acceptable because, you know, we see two or three of these every, every meeting, and it just seems like, you know, we're not doing a very good job of maybe providing services, infrastructure services to the town residents, if there are 70 private roads, you know, in the town at this point. It's not a very big town, in my opinion, so.
Through the moderator, myself and the assistant town engineer, we are in the process of driving every road in town and evaluating the condition, but at the same time, we're looking at which roads are accepted town roads and which were never accepted. And out of the 70 private roads, there are probably 10 to 12 of them that went through the subdivision control laws that were designed as subdivisions, were built, the houses were built, and for whatever reason, they were never accepted. In my opinion, those roads, I think we somewhat have an obligation to accept those as town roads because whether or not it was the developer or the town engineer or the town planner years ago, back in the '70s, when they were maybe part-time employees, never followed through with the process, those particular roads, I can see the justification for the town accepting. They were built with a specific cross-section, curbing, drainage, sidewalk, and I think many people, when they find out that they're not town roads, are very surprised. But then it leaves these other 58 to 60 roads, and I agree, if we can come up with a process, and I think it's something that through the town manager's office, we can try to develop that.
Okay.
I hope I didn't break it. I wanted to say, I'm speaking now as a former town clerk. It was, there were a lot of roads. We're really lucky in Auburn to have the DPW head we have, and I would hope that you'd all listen to his advice, and no, you will, because he knows what he's doing, and if we get a process, these people will get what they want, but it'll be done right, and it'll probably cost us less money.
Okay, thank you. So we're on the question of postponing indefinitely.
I'm in favor of postponing.
Yes, can come in. Trust me, I was, been reading. So you can, you can, nobody was interrupted, you can now, as it was moved by Ms. Holstrom to postpone indefinitely and seconded by Mr. Bergeron, if we postpone indefinitely, that ends it. If we don't, we're back to the original motion. So we're, the motion on the floor at this point is to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed to postponing indefinitely. Okay, we're going to count it. I think it's postponed, but let's count it. Let's be fair to everybody. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed to postponing indefinitely signify by raising their hands.
10.
By a vote of 60 to 24, Article 35 is postponed indefinitely. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve this town meeting with the thanks of your work tonight.
Make your motion.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.